I'd like to call to order the August 18th meeting of the Trudifern Township Board of Supervisors. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, everyone. The Pledge of Allegiance to the
Pledge of Allegiance.
States of America. Thank you. I think we need to wait for Carlotta to get on before we call to order the continuation of the continuing use hearing. We'll give her a minute. Sorry about that, everyone. Some technical difficulties here. We'll get it going.
Okay. I'd like to call to order the continuing use, continuing, continuation of the continuing use, continual, conditional use hearing. The continuation of the hearing to consider the conditional use application of the Islamic Society of Greater Valley Forge on behalf of North American Islamic Trust for properties located at 958 North Valley Forge Road and 966 North Valley Forge Road. Mr. McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As Mr. Miller stated, we were last here on July 21st, 2025 for this application. We did not finish the application in the hearing that evening, so we continued on the record until this evening. The applicant had completed the testimony of their engineer, and I believe will be proceeding with their second and last witness now, Mr. Patel. So with that, we have the witness sworn in, and we'll continue with the proceeding. Mr. Patel, I'm going to ask if you can turn your microphone on until the red light comes on. I'm going to ask you to pull that microphone right up into your mouth, real close, and speak up.
Better?
That's perfect. Thank you so much.
Could you speak into that a little more?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Mike Peters. As you know, I represent the applicant in this matter. As summarized at our first hearing in this matter on July 21st, we completed our engineer's testimony. The property involved is 958 and 966 North Valley Forge Road, and our engineer explained that 958 currently contains the ISGVF facilities. 966 is the property we reviewed with you that's known as the Duncan Farm property and is in a bit of a disarray currently. We explained at that hearing how a portion of the Duncan Farm property will become part of ISGVF's property, and how part of the Duncan Farm property will become part of Devon 50 Inc.'s Camp Jarvis property. We're here for a conditional use pursuant to Section 20845(c). We went through all the criteria under that section of the zoning ordinance at the last hearing. We introduced to you 12 exhibits, and now we have Mr. Patel here this evening. Just for the record, there were a few, a few minor things asked at the end of the last hearing that are shown on the plan, so I feel comfortable that I can represent what the plans show. That was, there was a question regarding the existing setback for the building on the ISGVF property along North Valley Forge Road. That existing setback is 15.5 feet, as shown on the plan, and also, as shown on the plans, the setback for the building on the Duncan Farm property is 49.9 feet. So those are those two distances from the right-of-way, and with that, we'll get right into Mr. Patel's testimony. Mr. Patel, if you could please explain your connection to this project.
So I'm the sole representative of Nate, North American Islamic Trust, and Islamic Society of Greater Valley Forge for this project.
Please explain your role with respect to the mosque.
I have been the member from its inception.
And are you familiar with what is being proposed in terms of new construction for the mosque?
I have been involved in the development of this project from the beginning.
Please explain to the board why the mosque is seeking the building expansion at issue.
The request for extension of the prayer hall is solely based on our existing needs. The extension is going to improve the quality of the services. Congregational prayer are our most important activity, which include everyone. Our families with children often cause disruption to a calm and serene atmosphere, so we want to accommodate them into a separate area.
Is it the mosque's desire through these improvements to increase the congregation size, or, as Mr. Ba testified to at the last hearing, to retain and serve existing congregation members?
That is correct, to retain and serve existing congregants.
There was a question at the last hearing regarding the congregation size. We deferred on that question to you, so what is the congregation size?
Currently, our monthly donor members are 122 families and individuals. However, our services are open to all.
So that means that the attendees at your services could be above and beyond those 122 current monthly donor members, correct?
That's correct.
With respect to how services are held, because the services are a little different from other religions, could you please explain to the board the times of services and how they're scheduled and held?
So we have daily services. There are five daily services: at dawn, noon, afternoon, sunset, and late evening. The number of congregants varies from 30 to 70, depending on the time of the day. Evening is more during than daytime. The weekly service, our weekly service, Friday services, which replaces noon prayer in three sessions. Thirty-minute service, 15 minutes to clear out the parking lot. It starts at 1:00 p.m. and ends at 3:00 p.m. The prayer also happens to end before the start of the rush hour. The average attendees is 230 congregants.
And that's across all three prayers, is that correct?
Right.
At the last hearing, we had discussion regarding the mosque's use of the Baptist church parking lot. Do you recall that?
Yes.
Have you had an opportunity to monitor the number of cars parking at the Baptist church?
Yes.
Please explain to the board how you went about doing that analysis.
So our weekly Friday prayers have three services, as I mentioned, 45 minutes each, starting at 1:00 p.m. We observed over the last four Fridays that we utilize all 100 available church parking spaces in first service. In second and third service, we utilize 31 and 27 parking spaces respectively on average.
We discussed at the last hearing that in addition to the building expansion, there's a proposed parking lot expansion, correct?
Correct.
And that adds an additional 60 parking spaces to the ISGVF property, correct?
Correct.
Based on the testimony that you just provided, for the second and third Friday services, parking demands of 31 and 27 respectively, there will no longer be a need for the church parking lot, correct?
That's correct. It will be virtually eliminated.
And for the first service, which is your biggest service on Friday, if you have 100 cars parking in the church parking lot, you're reducing the necessary parking by over half, correct?
Yes.
So that would leave, I mean, I understand these are averages, but about 31 cars that would need to park over in the Baptist church parking lot, correct?
About 40 of them.
About 40, yes. There were also questions at the last hearing regarding exterior lighting at the mosque. Do you recall that?
Yes.
And would you explain, please, what you plan in terms of exterior lighting?
The exterior lighting primarily provides safety and security. They meet the township requirements and the approval.
And your church services, the hours are a little unique, so could you explain to the board the times during which that exterior lighting is turned on?
So the exterior lights are automatically turned off at the conclusion of daily late-evening prayers via set timer.
With respect to the exterior lighting, is it your intention to limit the time during which the exterior lighting must be on to the maximum extent possible?
Yes, we limit use of exterior lighting as much as possible because it is the right thing to do. We are mindful of our neighbors' concern and have always been, and of course, that saves us money too by not having the lights on when the mosque have no activity.
So in essence, you'll turn the lights on to make sure your congregants are safe getting back to your cars, but otherwise, they'll be shut off, correct?
Of course, yes.
There was another question asked at the last hearing regarding anticipated growth after expansion. Is that something you have some input to as well?
Yes. We anticipate normal increase in membership due to population growth in the area. The expansion of the mosque will not invite an influx of members because of our expansion, as there are five mosques within 10-mile radius, and there'll be a new one coming up in Westchester.
The new ones in Westchester, you said?
Yes.
Anything else you'd like to tell the board? Those were the questions they had at their last hearing, so those were the questions we asked you.
Unless somebody has a question, I will try to answer.
At this time, Mr. Patel would be happy to answer any questions you may have, and there's a, just a procedural thing I need to do. I can't remember if I moved my exhibits into evidence last time, but I want to make sure I do that, too.
No, I don't think we've done that yet, so let's hang off before we do that. I have two quick housekeeping before we get to board questions. It appears that Ms. Carlotta Johnston-Pugh dropped, oh, no, she's back. Okay, she's back on. Matt Holt, supervisor, is unable to be here tonight. Do you have any objection to allowing him to participate in the decision-making? We'll make sure he gets a copy of the transcript that way.
No, sir. I'm confident he'll review the transcript. We have no problem with him participating in that.
And I'll certainly offer that to Ms. Johnston-Pugh for any of the items that she may have missed. So does the board have any questions for this witness?
Yeah, I just, we asked the times that the lights are on, and you didn't answer. So what times are they on?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, can you answer that? It's fluctuating, that's why.
So time of the prayers, so, and the lights. So early morning is like dawn time. Right now, it is 5 o'clock in the morning, and noon, of course, there's no light. It is right now 1:30 p.m. we offer, and afternoon one is 5:15, and sunset is around 8:30, or 8:00 nowadays is 8:05, and late evening is 9:30 p.m.
And so it starts at 9:30. When is it over?
And then about an hour later.
So 10:30, and then when do the lights go off?
Around 11 o'clock.
Around 11, okay, thanks.
Yeah. We keep changing timer as the daylight timing is moving.
Any other questions for this witness from any board member?
To be clear, if I could jump in, are there times when the lights will need to be on past 11 p.m.?
If we have some special program, a few times a year, not very often.
No other questions from the board. Let me see. I don't know which of the party, the other parties are here tonight. Lori Halpern. Is Ms. Halpern here tonight? Thank you. Lee Hall. Do you have any questions? Susan Corey. Is Ms. Corey here? Okay. Mr. Christakis, do you have any questions for this witness? Okay, thank you. All right. So do you have any other witnesses to present, Mr. Peters?
No, sir.
All right. Now let's get your exhibits in. What numbers do we have? Do you recall?
A1 through A12.
Okay. Is there any objection to the admission of the applicant's exhibits? A1 through A12. All right, so we'll admit the exhibits. Anything further from the applicant tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. So with that, Ms. Halpern is not here. Ms. Hall, if you would like, you are allowed to testify tonight. If there's any testimony that you want to offer, any evidence, any documents, you'd be subject to cross-examination. If you'd like to do so, now is your opportunity, as a party, to testify. You'd be sworn under oath. Okay. Mr. Christakis, do you have any testimony or evidence to offer on behalf of the church? Yeah, could you mind coming to the microphone?
Good evening.
Turn it on. There you go. Thank you.
Ari Christakis for Baptist Church in the Great Valley. Our pastor, Reverend Magat, is here with us tonight. She had a quick statement to read into the record. She is available to be sworn, obviously, if there are questions, but it's just a brief statement.
Why don't we, just for the, to be safe, we'll have the witness sworn in, and then you can make your statement.
State your name and sp- last name. Sure. My name is the Reverend Rebecca Driscoll-Magat, D.R.I.S.C.O.L.L., space, M.Y.G.A.T.T. I serve as the pastor of the Baptist Church in the Great Valley. We're located directly across the street from the Islamic Society of Greater Valley Forge, and tonight I'm here to express my support for them. In the 20 years that I have been in ministerial leadership, I can confidently say that the communities I've served in have been the healthiest and the strongest when they have had interfaith participation. I can also say that the Islamic Society of Greater Valley Forge was the first community of faith that reached out to me when I started my pastorate here in April of 2025. There's something extremely important about that warm welcome that did not require any transactional exchange. It was gracious, and it was warm, and there is so much to be said about communities that express that kind of generosity of relationship and friendship that doesn't get offered many places these days, and it strengthens partnerships, it deepens understanding, and it cultivates lasting and authentic relationships. I will say that my congregation wrote a letter in support of the mosque and its work and its faith community, as did the Upper Main Line Interfaith Alliance. That was also a letter that I have signed in support of the Islamic Society's work and ministry in Trudifern Township. So thank you so much for your time this evening. Thank you for letting me share my support for the Islamic Society.
Pastor, can you wait one second?
Sure.
Let's just find out, is there any questions for the witness?
No, no. Our client sincerely appreciates the kind words.
Does the board have any questions for this witness?
No, thank you very much.
Any other member, any other party have a question for this witness? Okay, thank you very much. All right, since we don't have any other parties with testimony, let's turn to public comment. If we, if there's anyone that has public comment, now would be the time to hear it. Yes, sir? Okay, we may be done before she gets here. We'll see. I thank you. Does any member of the public have any public comment on the application, one way or the other? Please, come to the microphone. Just identify yourself and make your comment.
Yeah, my name is Mark Smith. I live at 143 Old State Road. 143 Old State Road, right next to the, Old State Road?
Oh, old shit.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I guess I need to go slower. Anyway, my main concerns about the project are just stormwater and lighting spillover. Amateur telescope user, so lights bother me, you know, when I'm trying to view, but I understand people need to use them for parking lots. I was kind of hoping that they would have spillover protection. I'm not sure exactly what the township requirements are in that regard, but I gather a lot of parking installations, they limit spillover to the property line, and I didn't know whether that was going to be feasible or not in this case. The other questions, I guess mainly are due, are on the stormwater aspects. I gather this stormwater system will be meeting the minimum requirements, which would be a 25-year event, correct? Stormwater event?
Actually, no, the answer to the question is I'm not the engineer, so.
Well, that's normally, that's a Pennsylvania requirement. I guess it's 25-year, and then there's also a requirement for a 100-year event where you're supposed to minimize or not have damage to other property owners in the area as a result of your runoff. So I just wonder if there's, there's going to be a, some kind of a study as far as that's concerned to require that?
As part of the land development process, yes, the applicant's engineer will have to submit detailed stormwater management plans, and, to your point, the information and the math, more or less, to demonstrate that it comply with the requirements of the ordinance.
So will an NPDES permit be required?
Yes, it will.
Okay. And will there be a post-construction plan required?
Yes, there will be, and in fact, the maintenance of the storm system, there is an agreement that the applicant will have to enter into that gets recorded and runs with the land, so whether or not it's the mosque or another property owner, the maintenance of that system is a continuing obligation that runs with the land.
Okay. My other concern is the, given the extent of the parking area and the fact that it's in my water shed, and the fact that all the people, well, some of the people with standing, including people without standing, myself, and a lot of the other neighbors, we're all on water wells here. We're not on aqua. So there's concern about deicing chemicals from this large parking area getting into our groundwater. from this large parking area getting into our groundwater, you know, in the winter time. So, if we have a spike suddenly in de-icing chemicals in our water, would we have some recourse?
I can't answer you on that one. I really, I don't know that, I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know how will you demonstrate it's coming from their property.
We all just went through and had our water analyzed, and everything looks good right now. We have no excess of salt.
Again, I don't know how to answer that one. That's maybe the applicant can address it when you're done, but that's not something that the township really regulates, as far as I'm aware.
Yeah, Mr. Bott at the last hearing provided testimony as to, you know, we're required to regulate not just quantity, but quality of stormwater. So, the issue will be addressed during land development.
So, does that, I'm not sure. Could you tell me how that would impact?
Unfortunately, no. I'm not recalling Mr. Bott tonight, and the record is closed. So I'm, I do not intend to get into the specifics on snow removal tonight.
So, I have, I would have probably no recourse in the event that I have water problems as a result, I guess.
You may or may not, sir, I don't know. I don't know how to answer your question, that's what I'm trying to tell you.
Yeah, I just... One other thing, I mean, we're, they're doing an R1 overlay here to do this whole thing. And this is based on, you know, use for religious activity. That's what justifies the overlay, correct?
Sure, I understand the question, but the use is allowed as an overlay?
Basically, you know, we're talking about usually normally non-secular activities allowing to get an overlay in the first place for an R1 situation. So, in this case, I, the justification for the R1 overlay, the main justification is a religious use. Is that correct?
How the ordinance reads, it permits the religious use
Right.
as an overlay, subject to conditional use approval, anywhere in the township.
So, the township must have made a decision at some point that this is more of a religious use than a secular use, i.e., as a gym or a gymnasium, or basketball court, or whatever. And I was wondering, how many square feet of actual classroom for religious use versus square footage for a gymnasium or non-secular use?
I don't know, sir. I don't know if the applicant...
Yeah, unfortunately, I dispute the position that it's a, that it's a, that it's not a part of our religious use. It is. And again, the record's closed, the plaque can give you a copy of the, of the plan, but the zoning hearing board has already imposed a condition that if there are games in the gymnasium, a mosque team has to be involved. So, it is, it is limited to games involving the mosque, specifically.
That's all the questions I had, thank you.
Thank you, sir. You want to come up to the microphone?
Winifred Shaw Hope, 332 Brigade Court, in Jesterbrook. And I just want to show my support for this proposed, proposal that we're having. I am a Quaker, and I feel we worship differently, but we have a lot of the same values of caring for the community, of caring for children, and stewardship of the environment. And I am really pleased to hear how much thought you are putting into stormwater management as that has been an issue in this township, and we're trying to make up for deferred maintenance. So, I'm glad you're looking forward.
Just to remind the board on that point, there were two things the zoning hearing board required. One was that we over-design our storm system, which we've agreed to do. And two, they wanted us to look into porous pavers, which we've also agreed to do. Sure, so the zoning hearing board asked us to do two things. One, look into porous pavers, which we agreed to do. And two, to, yeah, and, and, I know, sorry if I mumbled. And the second was to over-design our stormwater management system.
Hello, my name is Pastor Micah McNett. I serve at St. Luke Lutheran Church. It's at 203 Valley Forge Road. I am a member of the Upper Main Line Interfaith Alliance, which we have members here tonight, and some that send their regrets that we could not all join together. We sent a letter to the members of the Board of Supervisors, but I'd like to read some of that aloud, to show our public support for our friends at the ISGVF. This letter was signed by 15 different faith communities in the area, and more clergy than that. Dear members of the Board of Supervisors, on behalf of the Upper Main Line Interfaith Alliance, we write to express our wholehearted support for the Islamic Society of Greater Valley Forge as they seek approval to modify their facility through the acquisition of the adjoining lot. This project will provide much-needed space for classrooms and play areas to support the existing community and their families, children with integrity and purpose. ISGVF has long been a valued part of our interfaith community, demonstrating a consistent and unwavering commitment to peace, education, charitable outreach, and mutual understanding. Their members have always shown up to support the wider community and have been active in the interfaith space. We are lucky to have them in our midst, and we believe that the proposed modifications reflect their ongoing dedication to serve this community well. We recognize that public hearings can sometimes include opposition based on fear or misunderstanding. As people of diverse faiths standing together, we respectfully urge the board to consider the importance of religious freedom, inclusion, and the positive contributions ISGVF continues to make to Tridiffrin Township. This is not merely a zoning or land use decision. It is an opportunity to affirm the values of equity, welcome, and community that define a healthy and vibrant township. Thank you for your attention and thoughtful consideration.
Good evening. My name is Robert Magat, M-Y-G-A-T-T. I'm a resident at 74 Old Forge Crossing. So I'm in the area that received notice for the meeting. I have been a resident of Old Forge Crossing at this point for nine and a half years, and I wish to speak tonight in support of the Islamic Society's application. As I understand it, from what was presented, both at the last meeting, as well as the zoning hearing board, which I also attended, this application is really about building community. The stated purpose of the application is for an institutional overlay to permit religious use. I will address that. Having been a member of my church, which is not the Baptist Church in the Great Valley, I've been a member there for over 25 years, and I have heard repeatedly that what makes a faith community special is that it, they are one of the last places that we have as a society where people regularly come together as an intergenerational community. This is true regardless of religious affiliation, whether that be a church, a mosque, or a temple. Approving this application allows the Islamic Society to create a space so that their current congregation can truly come together as an intergenerational community, which strengthens their community, and by extension, our broader community, as it is our neighbors who worship there. And I know that there are neighbors in Old Forge Crossing who do worship with them. My understanding is that this application will also facilitate a land transfer with Devon 50. As a Boy Scout growing up, I recognized that having more space, a larger contiguous piece of property, and greater access to the stream that runs through it will allow Devon 50 to also enhance their program. Again, this builds our community by giving our youth greater access and greater opportunity. I know, because we've heard that there are objections to this proposal. One of them, we've heard about is traffic. As has been made clear, this, with the additional parking, should reduce some of our traffic issues along Valley Forge Road. So, I think that sounds like it would be beneficial to all of us, because there will be less pedestrians crossing the street, less traffic interruptions. That should help a lot of that. Tridiffrin Township and Old Forge Crossing are great places to live. And I'm confident that I have neighbors in Old Forge Crossing who attend the mosque, just as I'm confident that I have neighbors who attend other nearby faith institutions. These faith organizations and other community groups and their proximity are an important part of what makes this a great place. They are the groups that bring us together. For me, these were the places that were formational growing up, and the places where I continue to find friends and connections. These are the institutions that contribute meaningfully to our quality of life. It is therefore incumbent upon us to nurture and support them so that they can continue to support the community. So, I fully support this application, confident that it will build and enhance this community we all call home. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dave Thomas, I'm with Devon 50, the Boy Scout troop that's nearby. I just want to say, as their neighbor, we support their development. And then as part of the transaction, if this, you know, goes through, the land that comes to Devon 50, as the gentleman before me said, will go on to serve our constituents. So we truly view this as a win-win for the community, both the nonprofit associations and how the Boy Scouts are using the land to keep it more natural and serving what the Boy Scouts do in outdoor activities, and what the ISGVF is doing for their membership. And as mentioned before about the traffic, it seems to help putting more parking on their side of the street with all the pedestrians walking across. So, just want to state that simply, thank you.
Any other member of the public? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I am a member of standing. I'm sorry I was late. Lori Halpern.
Ms. Halpern, good evening. So as a party, you have the right to provide actual testimony, not just public comment. Is that something you'd like to take advantage of, or do you want to actually...
I ask a couple of questions and clarifications, which I don't think may have been addressed, or I may have missed.
Get the microphone down in your mouth a little bit more. Pull that, pull that down a little bit more. There you go.
I just have a couple of questions I may have missed that I need clarification or answers to questions that may not have been posed.
We can try. Go ahead.
I know, last time we couldn't ask questions because the gentleman or woman was not here to be able to address them, so I'm not sure that this is the time as well. I think we come back to the point of traffic. At last week's time, I asked how many spaces and how many congregants there were. Will this new facility and this extra parking spaces doubling what presently exists? Will that address your congregants' needs?
We provide a testimony to that this evening. The answer is not for the first Friday service, where there will be approximately 40 cars still using the Baptist Church parking lot. Is that correct?
And will there still be police presence to be able to address the traffic?
Is that a question from my client? Well, I don't really intend to put my client back on. Would the board like us, would the board like me to?
I'd like to assume that he's still under oath at this point. Ms. Halpern, unfortunately, was a little late.
It's a little frustrating, because we have, okay.
I recognize, I'm trying to work
All right, fine.
within the reality of the situation. She is a party, she has questions.
I understand, but the party should have been present during the witness's testimony.
I don't disagree with you, but...
And the question was asked the last time, and was told that the person...
But we're here now, so let's, we have the time, we might as well get it addressed, so.
Okay. Mr. Patel, do you expect, and will you work with the township for police presence as needed?
That's correct. It will continue.
Sorry?
It will continue, police presence.
Okay, thank you. Do we know what the capacity of the athletic facility will be? So, so we have an unknown as to additional traffic and a capacity control.
Could you please repeat the question from the beginning?
We have a 50-foot-high structure of an athletic facility for which people will be coming there to participate in tournaments. This will bring, this is what was said last week, so I just need a clarification if that is the case. And in so doing, at these tournaments, people would be coming to see their family members. Do we have an idea as to how many people would be able to be held in this facility? How it's controlled? What the impact that will have?
All right, ma'am, hang on, you've asked your question now, let's see if he can answer you.
So, presently, we anticipate only community, families who regularly come, their children are going to be playing. There's no professional tournaments going to be happening there.
Okay, so that was, thank you. That needed some clarification, they said people would be coming.
No, no, no professional tournament.
So we're not looking at additional parking spaces or traffic or anything like that?
This is strictly for the community people.
Pat, can I ask you a question?
Of course.
So, you have the building designed, right? The gym is designed at this point?
No, 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 no. We haven't spent the money designing the gym, no.
Until we get through this, okay. Well, you're going to have a capacity limit that the fire marshal...
We will, we will.
What do you anticipate that will be?
We will have.
I get that. Would you, what do you anticipate that number will be at this point? Do you have a guess?
No more than a couple hundred people altogether, worshippers and everybody.
And I think if you end up looking at it just based on the nature of their use, their, their actual use will be below the capacity only because of the requirement of the zoning hearing board that a member, that mosque members be involved. So we'll have like a fire code capacity, but we're going to end up being, we'll be below that. We just don't have for you tonight what that fire code capacity is.
Present, we have no idea what the structure will be like.
There will be a land development stage where one of the things is, is traffic. That's, that's coming.
Okay, so we will address these things at a future meeting, perhaps, as to what impact traffic may or may not have based on the capacity of this facility that we do not know at this time, the size?
I don't believe it's necessary for this portion of the application. Certainly, I think it's part of land development. Traffic is typically addressed in great detail.
I believe someone had just mentioned that the games would not go past 11 PM. Do we have any restrictions as to commercial lighting or anything else that would be present for this? I don't know what the laws or by laws code is for that. Right now, I know there's enough light that's going on for the back...
I'm not sure what the last statement means. All I can say is that we do intend to comply with the township's lighting ordinances.
Well, we have any input into the, I think at the last meeting, it was mentioned that there would be a screen of some sort to block any light and/or noise. Do we have any input as to what that screening would be made of?
No, again, that, that is something the zoning hearing board has required. The actual physical plantings is something we'll work through during land development, and you absolutely can and should be part of that conversation. I don't think anyone will have a problem with that.
Thank you. I think at that time we've covered this. Then we said the lighting, we said the screening, we said the traffic. And those things will, I'm sure, continue. And then there's the water issues and the storm management. And that, I'm sure the township will be following.
Township is all over it, ma'am, yes, they will.
I thank them for that.
Yes, and, yeah, we understand that.
And we appreciate you going a little extra for that, because right now it doesn't exist for that property.
Yes, yes, we understand.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnston P., did you have a question?
I do. In reference to when they were saying the games will be, the games will be held with, not professional, but will, will there, will, will there be other children coming, playing that are part of another community, say from, I'm just going to use Springfield or what have you, or is it just the children in our area that would be playing? have you, or is it just the children in our area that would be playing tournament games or things of that nature? Because I'm thinking, no, not professional, but if you have, say, a mosque in Springfield or a mosque even in Philadelphia that these children would be playing against, would that make a difference in the amount of people who would be there, say, on a Saturday or a Sunday or what have you?
So, other mosque children will come and play as long as our mosque's young children are also playing with them. They are involved in that.
So, that number, so where the, the attorney was saying that, yes, there'll be the fire code number, but there may be less, we, at one, at a particular time, you may get to that number that the fire code is. Is that possible, which in turn may have more traffic than what you may have on a Friday or, you know, during prayer time?
Most of our activities will be outside the rush hours and traffic hours.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying about rush hour traffic. What I'm saying is that if during Friday afternoon when you have prayer, there's someone near this crossing the street. So, what I'm saying is, say, for instance, you're having a tournament on a Saturday and the fire marshal says you could have no more than 500 people. It is a great possibility that you may hit that 500 mark because the persons who else are part of that tournament are coming from someplace else. So, it may impact the police still crossing people across the street even though you have increased your parking. That's what I'm, I'm asking. Is that, is that feasible?
We don't anticipate and we are going to restrict that.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think one of the things during land development that the township may want us to do is work through some kind of parking program or, or something like that. Because I think it's a, I think it's a good question and we believe that practically speaking, that should not be an issue, but once we have an actual traffic engineer engaged, that's something we'd be happy to work through with the township.
Have one more public comment, ma'am? Do you have another comment you'd like to make?
Yes, thank you. I was already up here. Just say your name again one more time. Winifred Shaw Hope, H-O-P-E, 332 Brigade Court, Chesterbrook. I just want to remind the supervisors, I think you were all here in Tridifferent when Duncan's was thriving. And if you can remember, you couldn't really park in the back because they were cutting firewood. So, there were only limited spaces in the front. And when fresh strawberries came in, in June, and when fresh peaches came in in July and pumpkins came in in October, we had traffic and we dealt with it. And I also just want to make the comment that was made last time about just coordination. You're looking at green spaces and can you coordinate with the Baptist church and with Valley Forge Crossing to, to make it a beautiful place? Thank you.
Any other member of the public would like to make a comment?
Can I make a quick comment as a member of the public?
Of course.
Really quick, I respect your time. Just say your name one more time.
Lee Hall, 348 Old Forge Crossing. And we heard from a person, representative from the Boy Scouts, who talked about native plantings and the importance of natural landscaping. And there seems to me an opportunity where there could be some liaising between the adjoining properties, learning about native plantings, learning about natural landscaping that can do a lot to help the worries here that are real about the flooding. I do live in a unit that has flooded a number of times because of the impervious coverage in a lot of adjacent properties. So, I just wanted to bring up whatever we can do to help this be more of a win-win and more cooperation and more learning and more teaching. That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Last call, any other member of the public? Nobody online, right? Asking? Okay. Anything further from the applicant?
Just very briefly, just a brief closing remark. As, as the board knows and as your solicitor will inform you, an applicant is entitled to a conditional use as long as they meet the specific criteria therefor. Your zoning ordinance is not necessarily unique in not having any specific criteria, but what we tried to do is, notwithstanding that, walk you through basically all of the, the provisions of the zoning ordinance that apply, just to show you how much we've thought through it and where we did need relief, we've gotten relief. We take the concerns of the neighbors seriously. That's why when the zoning hearing board imposed the conditions that it, that it imposed, our plan is to work through and comply with those. We obviously did not file an appeal. Our preference, and it's actually part of the culture of the mosque, is to work with the community and that is, that is our intention. The last comment regarding native plantings, of course, that's something that, that we're willing to talk and work through with the community to, to make the project as, as good as it can be. So, we thank you very, very much for your time and for participating even from afar. This project is important to my client and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. So, I believe it's the intention of the board, they have 45 days to render the decision, but not to issue a decision tonight, but we would issue a decision at the regular meeting in September, which I'm trying to figure out exactly when that is.
September 15.
Thank you. Monday, September 15th, it'll be on the agenda for a decision.
Will that be just at the regular meeting?
That's correct.
Okay.
For the regular meeting, we'll announce it.
You don't want to come at 5:30 again?
No, we're good. 7:00 p.m.
7:00 p.m.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, that'll conclude the hearing. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And just to be reminded, the public meeting will occur at 7:00 p.m. tonight if anyone is here for the regular meeting.
Thank you very much for your time.
It's a product of two repertory for what it stands. One indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. I'd like to call to order the public meetings with Tridifferent Township Board of Supervisors for August 13th.
Turn up the volume. Oh, okay.
Can we turn off this now?
I turned it down, duh.
Thanks. We have announcements. In observance of Labor Day, Township offices will be closed at 2:00 PM on Friday, August 29th, and will be closed Monday, September 1st. We have approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments on the minutes? Any public comments on the minutes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes carry. Township business. The Board met in executive session prior to this meeting to discuss personnel matters. Supervisor Liaison reports. Supervisor Humble.
The Parks and Rec Board did not meet in August, so I do not have a report for them this month. And for zoning hearing board in July, I was out of town for that meeting, and you covered that for me.
I did, and I will report it when it gets to me.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gussi.
I do not have a report this evening.
Supervisor Baskar.
The Library Board trustees met on Thursday, July 24th. So here are the highlights. As always, the detailed minutes are on the website. So the meeting was attended by Joe Sherwood, the Chester County Library System Executive Director. He reported that he had attended the American Library Association Annual Meeting, and the attendance is only about half of normal, and there was many of the attendees had concerns. There were no attendees from Texas or Florida. In other notes, he reported that the Chester Springs Library was closed because a tree fell on the building, and they're looking for alternative spaces. And also because the collection was heavily damaged with moisture and mildew, they plan to write off the entire collection and start afresh. And also, by way of organization, the library now falls under the new Chester County Chief Experience Officer. The Board voted to approve the programming policy. The Policy Committee circulated the first draft of the new photo policy. Again, there are vacancies at the Stratford and Peole Libraries that they're trying to fill. And Treasurer Rob Rose recommended, reported that the library's electric bill this year was up 12% over last year. And I have personally read other reports elsewhere of extremely high electric bills this year because of all the AI data center construction that's going on, that's, you know, driving up the consumption of electricity. But that's obviously not part of the library report. And there is a change in the Board meeting dates. The meeting date that was previously December 4th is now going to be on November 20th. And so normally, the Board would not meet in November and meet in December, but because of the calendar this year, they decided to move the meeting to November. And the next meeting of the Library Board will take place next week, Thursday, August 28th. There was no meeting, moving on to the EAC, there was no meeting of the EAC in July. They don't normally meet in July. The next meeting will take place next week on Tuesday, July 26th. Oh, sorry, August 26th. Thank you.
Thanks, Supervisor Baskar. Supervisor Johnston Pugh.
Yes, I have a report in reference to the Art Commission. As people may know, or if they do not know, the Art Commission is looking to put art within the Township building. And we are still asking for residents to submit in any art that they painted or sculpted or things to put up. There is a plan, we have a plan to put it up in the building, and we're going to have an openings reception, which we're trying to hold on Friday, October 10th, from 5:00 to 7:00. And we will have more information coming, but we are looking for any artists that paint or watercolors or anything to submit into the Township. We will be picking the ones that we want, and we will be putting them throughout the building in the front, and then every, I want to say every three months, we'll be changing them so that other people in the Township will be able to see the art, because we are trying to bring art into the Township. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnston Pugh. Supervisor Weissaki.
Yes, I have one report. The Pension Trustees, the Pension Trustees met on August 13th for their quarterly review of the Police Pension Fund and the Non-Uniform Employees Pension Fund and the OPEB Trust. After examining second quarter and other performance information, the trustees concluded that no significant changes in investment strategy were currently needed. Trustees will monitor, will continue monitoring the uncertain economic and market conditions to determine if any significant changes in investment strategy become necessary. Next meeting of the Pension Trustees is on November 12th, 2025.
Thank you, Supervisor Weissaki. I'll report on the zoning hearing board, which occurred on July 24th. They raised, rendered a decision on the 2025-19 application from 4549 Park Ridge to subdivide the property. That was denied. Appeal 2025-20 was continued, this is the Cedar Hollow property matter. And then with respect to 2025-22, which was an application from Villanova University for a sign by the entrance that's entitled to Tridifferent Township, that was approved subject to, there was lights that were going to be on top of that, those signs that were removed, so the lights were taken off. The uplighting is still going to be there, and the sign will be installed, and that's it. The next meeting is going to be August 28th, Thursday, at 7:00 PM. And that concludes Liaison Reports. Next, we have an audit presentation. Mr. Duraco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Tonight, virtually, we have Joe Manfree from Barbicane, who is our audit partner. So with that, I'll turn things over to Joe. I think he has a short presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Joe, and hi, everybody. Let me see if I could share my screen. Everybody could see that? We're all good?
Yep.
Cool. All right, well, yeah, thanks for having me tonight, virtually. I'm happy to present the audit results of the 2024 audit. So I'll get right into it. So briefly, I'll just be going over the audit timeline, our audit approach, areas of audit emphasis, some audit results, other matters, and then I'll get into some financial figures as well. Our audit timeline, it was a hybrid approach, meaning that we were onsite and offsite for the audit this year. Anything that was done offsite was handled through Shorelink, which is our secure third-party software. So, you know, no data is being sent through email or any other unsecure ways. Fieldwork started March 31st this year, and we concluded our onsite fieldwork approximately April 25th, that week. A draft audit report was issued in late July to management, and management did review and approve of that draft report, as well as, I believe, it was shared with the Finance Committee, and they have their, we have their approval as well. Just a little bit of our audit approach, you know, our procedures are designed to target areas that we deem have greater risk. We really use a four-part approach that includes inquiry and documentation of controls and procedures. So pretty much how money's moving in and out of the township, whether that's payroll, cash disbursements, or cash receipts. We design and implement, you know, we make sure that the design and implementation of your controls is working appropriately. We do analytical review of activities and account balances, and then we eventually get down to substantive tests of key activities, whether that is confirmation of cash balances or debt outstanding, as well as, you know, revenue confirmations. Areas of audit emphasis, improper revenue recognition, kind of just keyed on that, you know, we test that by getting third-party confirmations, as well as we review other support. That's one thing that we are required to say that there is, you know, that that's a risk throughout our audit process. We also, like I said, do third-party confirmations of cash and debt balances. We do focus on capital outlays of expenditures, just to make sure that, you know, you are doing the proper protocols there, whether it's going out for bids and whatnot, and then making sure that, you know, what you are saying is fixed assets are truly fixed assets. Then we also, in a rotating manner, every three or four years, we look into one area of your controls a little bit more in depth. This year's test of controls was cash disbursements, so we took a larger sample of those disbursements, and we made sure the controls were operating effectively, which we did conclude that they were. And then we finally get to a random selection of other transactions. Audit results, we conducted our audit in accordance with accounting standards generally accepted in the United States of America, and the standards applicable to financial audits contain in government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. We issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, on the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information. And this year, we did have to do another implementation of a GASB standard. Management had to implement GASB 101, which is, changes to compensated absences. And in short summary here, essentially, prior to the standard, if it wasn't paid out upon termination, it wouldn't be accrued. But now, the standard's saying, if it's earned, and they have the right to use it within a year, you know, in terms of like taking PTO, it has to be accrued as a liability. So that's really the whole standard change. This did require a prior period adjustment, however, management and our team concluded that that change would have been an immaterial impact on your financial statements. So there was no prior period adjustment. Other matters, management was helpful and forthcoming throughout the audit process. We didn't have any disagreements with them that we would have had to, you know, tell you guys about. There were no waived audit adjustments. And again, we are available year-round for questions that the Township, or management, or the Board may have related to the audit or any other processes. We're getting into some financial figures here. So this is a look at your assets, and in comparison to 2024 and 2023. So the big things here, your cash balances are up, but as you may or may not know, again, we're looking at December 2024, so you did have a debt issuance last year of about $10 million. Obviously, that all wasn't spent in 2024, so that's why you have a little bit more cash on hand in 2024. You came in at just under $40 million. Investments were pretty, you know, comparative to last year, only increased about $700,000, coming in at 13.9. Other assets were down, but that's, you know, it was receivables, really. And then deferred outflows decreased about $4 million. The deferred outflows are related to your pension and OPEB plans, so they're really, you know, it's actuarial-based, so it's really not within the Township's control. You know, these are assumptions that are made a year ago, based off the census data and the investment activity, so nothing really the Township could do there. And then your capital assets were actually up $7.7 million, coming in at just shy of 78 million. There was like three major projects going on at the end of the year. I think it was the Bridge Avenue Project, roofed HVAC at the Township Building, and then the Glenn Hardy Avenue Project. Liabilities, deferred inflows, and net position, really, nothing really too crazy here. I just wanted to show you that your bonds and your notes payable did increase by just shy of 10 million. Again, the Township did have a $10 million bond that they issued in 2024, so that's the big change here. Again, your net OPEB and pension liabilities are kind of out of the Township's control, because a lot of actuarial data goes into that, but they decreased about $4 million, actually, so coming in at $24.4 million. And then your net, your net position increased about $4 million as well, coming in at 96.6 million versus 92.5 in 2023. Looking at the revenues of the Township, nothing really to talk about here other than taxes. As you know, the Township started in 2024, levying taxes for the emergency services as well as stormwater. So you see a lot of tax increases there, coming in at about 20, 21.4 million. If I had a guess in '25, you know, you would have somewhat, somewhat of similar tax revenue, slightly up, you know. And then looking at your expenses, few expenses decreased across the board. General government was down, but a lot of that was due to cap, like capital asset, you know, your fixed assets increased so much, so anytime that something's charged to general government, if you're capitalizing it, you're going to have decreased expenditures, as it's showing as a asset on your balance sheet. Public safety was down at 12.8 versus 15.7. Public Works, 2.7 versus 4.6. And then obviously, you see two new, you know, you see emergency services coming in at 4.6, that's what you're levying taxes for now, so that's a new line item. There was obviously nothing in 2023, because that was a new fund in 2024. And then overall, your expenses came in at 33.8 versus 33.6 in 2023. And then a look at your fund balances, so this is looking at your fund level statements, fund level statements versus what we just looked at was the entity-wide. This doesn't have any of the fixed assets or debt. That all runs through the P and L in the fund level statements. So your general fund has about $20.5 million in 2024 versus 20.2. Your capital construction, obviously, like I said, there was a lot of construction this year, so your fund balance decreased there to about $1.8 million. Stormwater, now that it's being funded with the taxes levied, is coming in at about $2.8 million, where it had a $1.4 million deficit in 2023. Emergency services came in at 2.2 million versus zero, because it's a new fund in 2024. And your super utility had a $500,000 increase, coming in at 41.8 million. So all in all, your total funds came in at 69.5 million versus 63 million. And that's all I had. I'm happy to answer any other questions that the Board may have about the audit report.
No, thank you, Joe. Thank you for the hard work. Any questions from the Board? Any questions from the public? No, thank you very much. I appreciate the report, and the audit is available, by the way, online if you want the details. It's available on our website. Well, thank you. Now, I need a motion to ratify executing the engagement letter between Strategic Solutions and Tridifferent Township for the condemnation proceedings for 355 Chase Road. Mr. McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you use the engagement letter for John Trent, who happens to be both a certified land planner and an attorney, as part of our preparation for if and when the Picketpost condemnation proceeding on valuation moves forward, I'm lining up the experts that we're going to need to testify in support of the valuation of the Township. Mr. Trent is one of those that we would like to utilize, given both his expertise, both in planning and the legal field, and his experience, which we thought was also spot-on. So we had talked about that in executive session. Due to timing to get him engaged, that was signed, and we're asking it to be ratified by the Board this evening.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any comments or questions from the Board? Comments or questions from the public? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve capital purchase of police vehicle. Well, you're not Chief Beatty, are you? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Tonight, we're asking for approval to purchase a 2025 Ford Police Interceptor Utility SUV. The reason for this request is on June 5th of this year, and also was involved in a single car, single-vehicle accident. The vehicle involved in that accident was a 2021 Ford Interceptor Utility SUV, and due to the age of the vehicle, the mileage, and the damage sustained, the insurance company declared a total loss. We were able to find a comparable vehicle, which is located at Keystone Ford in Chambersburg, upon the CoStar pricing. The cost of the new vehicle is $46,500. The insurance payout was $20,537. The insurance payout was $20,537. We were able to repurpose most of the vehicle's equipment, so the outfit for the new vehicle is estimated at around $10,000. We're requesting to proceed with the purchase at an estimated cost of $35,963. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Yeah. I need him to say that again, that the vehicle costs $46,500, and how much are you getting from the insurance company? Okay, and then you were able to take much of the equipment from the old car and put it on a new car?
Correct.
And that was about, what, $10,000 worth of?
The rest of the outfit will cost around $10,000.
To put it on, okay. And so you need $35,000 to buy this new car?
Correct.
Okay. The numbers just, I'm trying to figure out the numbers because I'm taking the 20 from the 46, and I'm like, wait a minute, where's this 35 coming in at? But I'm getting it now, okay.
So I had one comment, and I'm just making this for the record and for the public, which is that I was wondering why we're not getting a hybrid vehicle because police vehicles spend a lot of time sitting, and hybrid vehicles save a lot of fuel. But it turns out that hybrid vehicle is not available. We needed the vehicle. This one happened to be available, so we're getting this vehicle.
Thank you, Supervisor Baskar. Any other comments? Any comments from the public? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the final escrow release of 958 Mount Pleasant for the amount of $33,342.23, conditioned upon full payment of all outstanding reimbursable invoices from the township. Mr. Burgo.
Chairman Miller, members of the board, this is a final release request for escrow for this 958 Mount Pleasant. It includes a variety of items, including roadway restoration, concrete monuments, as-built survey, and final raking, seeding, and stabilization of the property. It has been inspected and is recommended for release this evening, as we'd said, conditional upon the applicant paying any of his outstanding reimbursables.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a question. What, do they have reimbursables?
The, those are basically inspection costs during construction, so.
I know what they are, but how much do they owe us?
They owe us several thousand dollars from basically the last several months' worth of inspection. So, you know, we've been in contact with them, and they just haven't settled up and paid that bill, so we're, they finished the work, it's just a matter of paying that, so we can, we talked with the solicitor, and we said, we're okay with this evening of just having this conditional upon them paying that because they didn't indicate that they would be, you know, paying their bills. But once again, they just haven't done that.
And we're not going to pay them until we get it, for sure.
Yeah, we're not going to pay until we get it.
Okay, I'm good. I'm good. Any other board comments or questions? Public comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the account agreement between Tridifferent Township, Tridifferent Easttown School District, and the Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust, Pliget, for Conestoga High School Athletic Fields. Mr. McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The account agreement before you is essentially an escrow agreement where the school district maintains the cash on hand for the financial security to secure the improvements for the Conestoga High School Athletic Fields Project, which was actually approved some time ago. There was an oversight, I think, on the part of the township. We just didn't act on the agreement. It's already been signed by the school district and needs to be approved by the township, and then also needs to be signed by Pliget itself, and we'll circulate a fully executed version at that time. The district has used Pliget for years to, as their basically escrow holder, to secure the funds for the project. So it's kind of a formality, but it's definitely important, and we need to get it in place, particularly given that they're moving forward with the project.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments from the board or questions? Public comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve proposal from Bowman to assist township staff with the application for a Green Light Go grant. Mr. Burgo.
Chairman Miller, members of the board, this Green Light Go basically grant would be for Paoli Route 30. It's for signals. We currently have a rhythm adaptive system that's installed in there, and ever since it's been installed, the township and our Public Works Department have had problems with the maintenance on that system and issues with the system. So several other municipalities have had the same kind of situation occur, and PennDOT has had a program where, like through this Green Light Go, where we can apply for grants to basically upgrade that equipment and with new, either upgraded adaptive equipment or other control signal equipment that would be comparable or better. So what we're asking the board for is for us to be able to work with Bowman and to move forward with an application for the Green Light Go project, which will be this fall, so we can start to prep for that and then submit that and hopefully get a award from PennDOT to, you know, begin and start doing the replacement of that equipment. It includes signals from 252 on Route 30 all the way to Plank Avenue in Willistown at the border there, so the whole stretch of Paoli. And currently, just as an FYI, we do pay a yearly fee to Rhythm. That's part of the frustration. Our Public Works Director, I talked with him earlier today, too, he pays, we pay a certain percentage every year for each signal, and the system, he just doesn't, he's not satisfied with the level of service that we do get when we do call if there's an issue because we have to go through Rhythm for any issues we have. It's been a problem. PennDOT, for more or less, only approved that one entity to do those systems years ago when we did this. We didn't want to originally go with that, that particular equipment, but we didn't have a choice way back when. So I think this is a great opportunity to hopefully get some funding to basically swap out the equipment in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Burgo. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion.
All right. We have a second.
Second.
Yeah, thank you. Any comments or questions from the board?
Yes, I just wanted to report on a conversation I had with Mr. Burgo earlier today and to reiterate what he said. So the question I had for him was compared to, you know, like the early 2000s or the mid-2000s, traffic on Route 252 and Route 30 is a lot less and seems to be much better managed, there are fewer backups than there used to be. And so I said, why do we want to change the traffic light? And the answer was basically what he said, which is that the current system, we pay a certain amount. Anytime something goes wrong and things do go wrong with the system, you have to contact Rhythm for work on it, and they're not very responsive. And so since there's a potential for a grant to replace that with something that will work as well or better, but be able to be more maintainable, I think it's a good thing to try and get the grant.
That we think will save money. Okay, any public comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the stormwater best management practices, operations, and maintenance agreement for YSC Sports, Pico, and Tridifferent Township. Mr. Burgo.
Chairman Miller and members of the board, this stormwater best management practice, O and M agreement, is a kind of a three-party. It's Pico Energy as the owner of the property. U Sports is proposing to put a parking lot diagonally across from where their facility is in Upper Marion, right at the edge of the township, and Tridifferent Township. So it's been reviewed by the Township Solicitor's Office and Township staff, and we are recommending, you know, the board consider approving that tonight.
It was actually on last month's meeting. We had it bumped because we had a driveway issue that we had to get resolved. That has now been resolved to the township's satisfaction.
Thank you. Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Comments or questions from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to adopt Resolution 2025-15 regarding the reimbursement of the township capital contributions in the event of a future sale of the assets of the Valley Forge Sewer Authority. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you, tonight is a resolution reflecting our position on township capital contributions in the event of a sale. As you know, we serve on the joint board of the Valley Forge Sewer Authority along with five other municipalities and the Valley Forge Sewer Authority itself, and they're members. We've been working closely with Easttown Township and a few other municipalities because we're moving into a large capital investment at the plant, and we've been talking back and forth with the sewer authority about what would happen in the event of these investments in the future. We want to preserve our rights if there was ever a sale. I want to be clear, there is not a potential, but with the increased capital investment, we want to secure our position of where we believe those assets, how they would be shared among the municipal partner municipalities. So that's this resolution. It kind of lays out our position. The other municipalities will also be looking at it and hopefully voting on it as well, and this will also be before our municipal authority in September. And I have the Chair, Mr. Heberg, here tonight from our Township Municipal Authority. If you have any additional questions about this, we'd be happy to answer those questions. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks. Any board comments or questions? Mr. Heberg, anything you want to add? That's good. Okay, thank you. Yeah, no, good, thank you. Any public comments or questions? Sure.
Thank you for the superintendents doing the work at the town. My question is really about Wilson Park, and I know a lot of money is being spent over there.
Sir, I'm sorry, this is about the sewer authority.
Oh, that's why I asked a question whether that was about.
Yeah, the question's about the sewer authority, not about this. We'll have time at the end. No, thanks. All right, this is a roll call vote. I haven't seen no other questions. This is a roll call vote. Supervisor Humble.
Aye.
Supervisor Gussi.
Aye.
Supervisor Baskar.
Aye.
Supervisor Johnston Pugh.
Aye.
Supervisor Wysocki.
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries. And now we get to citizen new matters, or board member new matters. Any board member new matters? Citizen new matters.
Okay, Roland Johnson again, Paoli. Again, I thank you people for doing the work of the township. It's not an easy job, and you don't receive a lot of compensation for it. One of the things that I saw there is, you know, I walk a lot over in Wilson Park, and I notice a lot of money being spent over there. And I was over there recently, and I walked the pathways. Do we have a breakdown of how this money is going to be spent? Because I saw, for example, they're seal coating all the walkways. Now, I'll tell you, I walk over there four days a week, and I see those walkways. They look fine. They were not in bad shape at all, and I was wondering, do we know how much we're going to be paying for the seal coating of all those walkways? And is it all those walkways that are going to be done? And is there a breakdown of the renovations, what's going to be done on those, what they're going to cost, and who's doing them?
Mr. Druck, do we have the budget for the project posted on our website? I'm sure we do.
Yeah, it would be a part of the board packet when the board approved the bids. All of the information you're looking for is included.
How much was the seal coating?
I can't remember off the top of my head, but I know it's.
And all the walkways were being done?
Yeah, all of the walking paths.
Well, I don't know how many of you superintendents have walked the walkways over there, okay? But I was just wondering what the cost would be of that, because, again, as a citizen that walks there four days a week with my wife, et cetera, they're not in bad shape. And money should be spent on projects that are in need of repair, not just to spend money because they have a bonding for it. So my question is, again, who determines, you know, what is being done on the projects? And what is the cost of each one as to the value of what is being done to the dollars that are being spent? Now, you should know how much we spent for the seal coating, should be there.
Well, it's there on a document. We don't have it memorized, sir. So we have it, it's on the website for the township. We don't have it memorized.
It would be on a township website?
Yeah, if you want to give, if you want to give my assistant your email, we'll. Yeah, we'll send it to you. We'll send you the whole package. It's not a problem. We'll send you the whole package, the whole budget for the project.
Broken, okay. Again, my question, not so much is that, is the question is, did that have to be done?
So, yeah, I can answer part of that. I mean, so we did secure grant funding for this project, and part of it is we're investing a lot of money in Wilson Farm Park. And yes, you're right. I think the academy itself of the paths are in good shape, but by sealing them as part of this project, you're kind of putting it all together in a big bid project, and you have a cost value of that, and sealing them will extend the life of those paths. So it made sense for investing, you know, having a $1.5 billion grant in the park, let's seal coat those, it'll extend the life of those longer rather than having to repave them. So that was all part of the process of putting it together, of investing in the park. So, but we could certainly get you all that information.
I'm just giving you, and I'll stop with that. I'm just giving you an anecdotal.
Sure.
Response. People that I walk with over there, quite a few of us, walk around, we saw them doing it, and in anecdotal response, I asked the people, what do you think of these walkways? You know, as to, you know, I know how much seal coating costs just to do a driveway, so I can imagine what that costs. Not cheap. But a second question, if I may. On the Picket Post, I know that in the last meeting, the $675,000 offer was rejected by the.
No.
No.
We paid in estimated just compensation of $625,000, and that was accepted by them.
He accepted?
He did. It doesn't mean the case is over, but yes, they have accepted that amount.
Oh, because I thought the last time there, that the last meeting was, indicated that he had rejected that.
No.
Okay, so do we have an idea what the final cost will be?
Not yet. No, sir. We're in a wait-and-see right now, holding pattern.
But he's accepted the $675,000?
$620,000, yes.
Excuse me?
I think it was $620,000, yes.
Okay, so he's accepted the $620,000.
Correct.
But we don't have an idea what the total cost would be legal, et cetera, et cetera.
No, we're not doing anything right now. We're waiting. I'm in a holding pattern until they take further steps, so I have no idea. We have not been in front of a board of view or a court.
Okay. So it's just a holding pattern? What would be the next step then would be?
They have to file a petition to appoint a board of view.
Excuse me?
They have to file a petition for the appointment of a board of view, which would then preliminarily determine a value of the property, which can then be appealed by either side to the Court of Common Pleas.
Okay, but he's not appealing the, he's not appealing the only property?
Sorry, hasn't yet.
He hasn't done anything yet. All he's done is accepted the estimated just compensation that we paid for what we believe to be the value of the property. I assume he thinks it's worth more than that. It's fair to say.
Right, so, you know, pardon my naivete, but so he has not accepted the offer then?
He accepted the estimated just compensation. That is correct.
But he has a right to appeal it.
Not appealing it. The value is not finally determined.
Oh, so the value has not been, so, right, so in other words.
That's correct.
So this is a legal case, so we don't have to give more, I mean, this is basically, we're just waiting, in a waiting pattern, and nothing has happened except, nothing's changed from last month.
But we still don't have even a ballpark idea on what.
We have lots of ideas, but we're not going to share them with you in public. It's a legal case, potentially, and nothing's changed since last month.
No, it's just a general question, that's all. That's all.
Even the general answer, which is we're not sharing, we have lots of thoughts, but we're not sharing.
No, I'm just, I'm just, you know, an idea, you, listen, you're excellent people. You do the work of the township, et cetera, and I commend you that. I'm just trying to find out as a taxpayer, as a citizen, on some of these large expenditures, like an idea on how much it's going to be. It's like if I tell my wife.[1738.33] like, an idea on how much it's going to be. It's like if I tell my wife, listen-
It's a legal case between us, potentially a legal case between us and the developer.
That's correct.
We're not going to show you any numbers except $625,000, which is, but we believe it's worth.
There's going to be additional cost legal expenses.
So far, there have not been, but we think there will be.
You think there will not be, or?
No, so far, there have not been additional legal expenses. Nothing has happened.
Again, all I'm trying to do as a, as a citizen, et cetera, is, like I said before, just to find out what the idea of the final cost would be relative to the benefit of the town. That's all. Just like I, if my wife says to me, listen, I want, I want to do the kitchen over again, well, I have an idea on how much it's going to be and what it is. I just don't go off and say, well, you know, whatever it is, it is. No. An idea on what some of these things are going to cost. But anyway, I thank you for your service for the town.
Any other citizen new business?
We have a comment.
I was, I was just going to comment to Mr. Johnson, which is that, you know, the other party has basically done the equivalent of cashing our check. At this point, they have a certain period of time in which to come back and say, you, you know, you should give us more money. But if they don't come back and say, give us more money, then we don't have to give them any more money. But at this point, if they come back and say, give us more money, then at that point, there's going to be a board of review, and there's going to be a legal process for deciding how much more money they're worth. And right now, we don't know, and, and since we, we can't read their minds, we don't know how much they're going to come back and ask for, or if they're going to ask, come back and ask for something. We expect that they're going to come back and ask for something, but right now, we have the, you know, we're not unfortunately able to read their minds.
Mr. Chairman, we have a, someone who's tending virtually, comment?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello? Hi, this is Ray Clark. I'm on Carol's phone. I just wanted to thank the gentleman who was just asked-
Sure.
And I'll keep it about this way. Okay, my name is Margaret Van Narson, in 460 Prussian Lane, and I want to alert you, the community in general, about a concern I have about police report writing. And so, I, just before the meeting, I briefly spoke with Lieutenant Slavin, and we, but I still want to go ahead and make my comments. The general question is, does the Tridifferent police use, or is it considering using, software from a company that relies on body worn, body worn cam transcriptions that, for police report writing software, in order to save time writing police reports? I know it's a very time-consuming process. And specifically, what company is it from? I'll mention this later. But police interviews, transcripts of interviews, has been one area that linguists like myself have focused on as an expert consultant or witness in legal cases. This summer, I participated and presented at an international conference on language and law in Cape Town, South Africa. The closing plenary at the conference was by our, by our incoming president from Hofstra University. She wanted to alert the linguists working in legal contexts to a growing problem with the use of AI, artificial intelligence, in the writing of police reports. These reports frequently become evidence in legal cases, and linguists like myself frequently are consulted to examine the language evidence. Knowing the errors and the problems that such software can cause is extremely important. And the title of her plenary, and she's our incoming president, was, the spy network was a group of highly trained squirrels using AI to generate police reports. She was, she was focusing on a specific software from a company called Axon, A-X-O-N. It's the largest supplier of body worn cams in the US. And she was looking at the Axon, and I was also looking then at the Axon website. And there is software that appears to, it's called a Draft 1, and it's on rewriting, report writing. And there are a number of smaller suppliers of such software. But as linguists, and I could go into more detail, the problems, but the use of relying on the, the audio from body cams to translate, you know, to put into, to turn into transcripts for police report, report writing, and then generating sort of generic police reports, is a serious problem in terms of fairness and, and legal cases. And I just wanted to alert the police and the community in general of this growing concern about the use of AI in writing police reports. That's all.
Thank you very much. That's a good thing to think about. Thank you.
Okay, and I have copies, if anyone wants to have, have a copy. All right, any questions?
This is really helpful. Thank you. Any questions, anybody? No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public?
Mr., I think Mr. Clark is back on, so.
Hello, can we, can you hear me now?
Yes, I apologize, Mr. Clark. I was trying to lower your hand and hit mute. My apologies.
Oh, okay. Not like super important here, but I just wanted to thank the gentleman who was asking the questions there, and to thank Supervisor Baskar for helping to clarify what's going on. I think when the solicitor said that the previous owner had accepted our check, it clearly means he just cashed the check. It does not mean he accepted the value, and that the value is still subject to the court case. And thank you to Supervisor Baskar for making that clear. And thank you to the gentleman who was previously asking the questions for asking the questions.
How long do they have to?
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Hi, my name is Hans Ramal from Paoli. I just wanted to thank the board. I know last month, you passed Resolution 2025-13 about SEPTA funding and the advocacy for it. As I stated, I believe in a previous meeting, I do also work for the House of Representatives. The House did receive your resolution. It was greatly appreciated, and I just wanted to give the update that the House passed a fifth version of transit funding, which, once again, is still pending for the state senate. I would please encourage the board members to continue to advocate to their members of the senate. As public information has obviously been leaked out, the senate is deciding to take other approaches about funding public transit, which ultimately don't turn into funding mechanisms. It's really just moving money from, essentially robbing Peter to pay Paul. So, your local advocacy is greatly appreciated, and I would please urge you to continue to do that as the days, weeks, and months still go ahead. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments or questions, or new business? Board, you guys done? We, you know, you need a motion to, to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second? All in favor, aye. Our next meeting is at 15th. Thank you.